There's no question that we have reached the quorum, which for those who are new, is only 150. We still have a few people waiting, but by the time we get through kind of the perfunctory, introductory remarks, we'll get to the order. So the Chair calls a meeting to order, and as we always do, I'd ask that you stand and ask the chairperson of the Board of Selectmen, Jessica Bradley Rushing, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And again, once again, we welcome you to this special town meeting, particularly those who are here for the first time. Couple of just introductory remarks and announcements to get us going. For many years, she's only missed a few meetings. Carol Dodge has always been in our lobby selling just what we need for a long evening, caffeine and sugar, to help us get us through. Carol has only missed a couple of meetings over the years, and she is out there again, and all the proceeds benefit the Key Club. So if you need a pick-me-up, she is out there, and she'll be there for most of the meeting, selling coffee and donuts. There's also a raffle in the hallway to benefit the Pembroke Firehouse Food Pantry, one of many great projects that this town supports. For $20, you can win a signed Ray Bork captain's jersey. I think it's hanging out there. Only 200 tickets will be sold. Drawings will be held Saturday, November 6th. Also, I've been asked to remind you of the, it's nice to have these things happen again, the Vendor Crafts Fair, which is Saturday, November 6th, from 10 to 3 at the Pembroke Knights of Columbus. Vendors, crafters, and artisans, raffles, food concessions, free admission, free parking, free Wi-Fi. That's at the Knights of Columbus on Saturday, November 6th. Also, if you've been to a store recently, it's no surprise that Christmas is not that far away, and the annual Pembroke Christmas Tree Lighting Ceremony will be December 5th, from 3 to 6. You can get more information at pembroctreelighting.com. Of course, it's in the town green. Donations and sponsorships are welcome. This meeting is being broadcast on Comcast Channel 15. We thank the folks from PACT Television for all their great work in making this possible, as well as closed captioning. You can also stream this meeting online, live at pactv.org/live. And if you care to see it again, you can always go back, and it's available to view after the PACT TV video share channel on YouTube, obviously when the meeting's complete. And once again, I want to mention that thanks to the folks at the Pembroke School Department and the town clerk's office, we once again have the cafeteria available for folks who feel more comfortable wearing masks only. That is a mask-only area. We do have people there tonight. We welcome them. They are listening in. They cannot speak from there, but if they do wish to speak to this meeting, there is a microphone in the back that will be reserved for them. We have a deputy town moderator, Steve Curley, who many of you know, former longtime chair advisory, who is the deputy moderator, who is monitoring that room for me. And we, there is the ability to vote, and there's a teller in there as well. So that room space is available. Couple of things I want to bring out. We did expect perhaps a larger share than normal of visitors, and that's fine. There is a town bylaw which says that the room shall be limited to residents only, voting residents only. But it does give the moderators some discretion, and quite frankly, since this chair has been moderator the last 12 years, and for the 50-plus years John Walsh was moderator, we always has a visitors section. We welcome visitors. We will strictly enforce the visitors section. It is that section to the left of me, to the left of the doors back there. All the visitors will have badges that indicate they are visitors. As you came in, you were handed a written voting card, yes or no card. We anticipate there will be a request for a secret ballot, and if that's the case, that's up for you to decide whether you choose to have one or not. If we do have one, we are giving out the ballots ahead of time, just so that it would save time, so we don't have to distribute them and go through all that process. Plus, it gives us some degree of security that only those who have the cards are registered voters. The other thing which we have not done in the past, which the chair is going to do, is that we are going to strictly enforce the rule that you will not be counted if you are standing. So if there's either a vote count by a show of hands or a standing vote count, the tellers, which have already been sworn in, have been instructed only to count those who are seated. So there are plenty of seats available. Again, we want to ensure the integrity of the vote, so we ask for your cooperation on that. Once again, if you do not have a warrant, please raise your hand, and the ushers will make sure you have one. Our procedure for those who are new is fairly simple. You have to address everyone through the chair and through the microphones. If it's difficult for you to get to the microphones, just raise your hand. Someone will help you get a microphone to you. Or for worse comes to worse, you can speak from the chair. But because we're being recorded, because this is livestreamed, we want to make sure everyone can be heard and seen, so we ask you to come to either one of the microphones at either side, or the microphone in the back, and you will be recognized in the order in which you stand up. I also ask that you state your name and your street address. Even if you think everyone knows who you are, I'm sure there are people who don't, and to the extent that, I know we have probably WATD covering this, I think the broadcast, rather, the print newspaper treats Pembroke as Lake Woolbegon's children. Unfortunately, we have very little broadcast, rather, print coverage of this town, but at any rate, there may be reporters who want to know who you are. And so please state your name and your address when you come to the microphone. The only exception is if you wish to state a point of order, wish to raise a point of order, in which case I just ask you to jump up or raise your hand, shout it out, "Mr. Moderator, point of order." Point of order can be a question about procedure. It can be, "Mr. Moderator, I can't hear. I don't understand. I don't know what that means." For this night only, the chair will make an exception and allow a point of order to give us the Red Sox score, for this game only. For this night only. So, other than that, if you need to make any type of motion, procedural or otherwise, want to address the crowd, then you have to do it from the microphone. Chair has been just informed that we obviously have reached the quorum. Not a record count, but we have 355 registered voters who have come to this meeting, and again, I thank you for that, and thank your attendance and your patience for waiting a few extra minutes. For those who are new, we use the lottery system, our high-tech ping-pong ball scheme here. So all the numbers, all the articles, we brought up by random. And I just want to introduce the members in front here. To my right are the members of the five members of the Board of Selectmen. Right in front of the chair is Bill Shannard, who was our town manager. To his left is Joel Bard, who is our longtime, semi-retired but coming back for this meeting, Town Council from Cobbleman and Page. It's actually KMP now, right? Joel Bard. And to the left are the hard-working members of the advisory committee. So we thank them all for their work. One procedural motion that we have to make, and that is, there are several votes that require a two-thirds majority, and instead of having to do a standing vote for every one of those, traditionally, the meeting gives the moderator the power to declare a two-thirds, and with the exception that if there's any question about the two-thirds, the chair will always seek a standing vote, and you can question me on that. If anyone questions my vote, the seven people stand, and then we go to a standing vote. So Ms. Rushing moves that if a two-thirds vote is required by statute, the moderator is authorized to declare a two-thirds vote if, after a show of hands, the moderator determines that the two-thirds majority has been reached. Provided, however, that if a vote so declared is immediately questioned by seven or more voters, the moderator shall verify the two-thirds majority by ordering a standing count of the yays and nays. Is there a second? Chair has seconded any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no, the ayes have it. And we are ready for the first item of business. Which is Article VII. Article VII is money that is to be expended from the Community Preservation Fund, and traditionally, there are several recommendations, and we will treat each one as a separate motion. So in recommendation A, the chair recognizes the chair of the Community Preservation Committee, Lisa Collet. At least that, yeah. Okay.
Hello. Okay, now it's on. Move that the sum of $8,758 be appropriated from Community Preservation Undesignated Reserve Fund, and that said funds be used by the town manager for the rehabilitation and restoration of land for recreational purposes by constructing and installing fencing at the Matakeeset Street Playground.
Chair has seconded. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion by Lisa Collet, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Recommendation B, the chair recognizes Lisa Collet.
Move that the sum of $75,000 be appropriated from the Open Space Reserve Fund, and that said funds be used by the Pembroke School Department for the rehabilitation and restoration of land for open space and recreational purposes by funding Phase II Part I of an athletic field project to include groundwork and dugouts at the Pembroke High School varsity baseball and softball fields.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Recommendation C, chair recognizes Lisa Collet.
Mr. Moderator, move that the sum of $15,000 be appropriated from Historic Resource Reserve Fund, and that said funds be used by the Pembroke School Department for rehabilitation and restoration of historic resources by contracting professional services to support development of appropriate work scopes, specifications, testing, administration, and cost estimates for the historic hatch building.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed? The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Recommendation D, the chair recognizes Lisa Collet.
Mr. Moderator, move that the sum of $135,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Undesignated Reserve Fund, and that said funds be used by the town manager for the purpose of preserving and rehabilitating land for recreational use by making accessibility improvements consistent with the Americans with Disabilities Act to the town landing beach and guardhouse for Phase II.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Recommendation E, Article VII, recommendation E, the chair recognizes Lisa Collet.
Mr. Moderator, move that the sum of $1,000 be appropriated from the Community Preservation Undesignated Reserve Fund, and that said funds be used by the town manager for the purpose of rehabilitation of historic resources by designing and installing a new sign for the historic Pembroke G.A.R. Hall.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. And that's how it's done. Article V.
Hello?
No, the chair recognizes, okay.
Robert Kenny.
Oh, Article V, excuse me. Chair recognizes Bob Kenny.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $25,000 to be added to the Special Injury Leave Fund established by Article VII of the May 9, 2017 town meeting. And further, that the sum of $75,000 be appropriated and transferred from free cash to be added to the Workers' Compensation Insurance Fund established by the vote of Article IV of the October 24, 2017 town meeting. And further, that the sum of $194,385 be appropriated and transferred from the Water Service Installation Fees to be added to the Water Department Stabilization Fund established by vote of Article VI of the October 23, 2018 town meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion by Robert Kenny, please raise your hand. All those opposed? The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Article III. Chair recognizes Matthew Rushing, advisory.
Move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $183,120 from taxation to supplement the amounts voted under maturing debt excluded interest, and transfer the sum of $3,838 from free cash to supplement the amounts voted under short-term interest under Article II of the fiscal year 2022 annual town meeting.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Chair recognizes Kristi Cullinane from the advisory committee.
Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to authorize this select board to acquire, by purchase, gift, and or eminently, a parcel of land located on Matakeeset Street identified by its sensors as parcel 86-248, containing .615 acres, more or less, and described in a deed recorded with the Plymouth Registry of Deeds in Book 2609, Page 476, for general municipal purposes on such terms and conditions as the select board deems appropriate, and further to transfer from free cash the sum of $6,700 to fund said acquisition and payment of costs incidental or related thereto.
Motion by Kristi has been made and seconded. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in, this does require a two-thirds vote, so we'll try it by a show of hands. All those in favor of the motion by Kristi, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes declare it, and I, the ayes have it, and I declare it so voted, having reached the necessary two-thirds necessary for passage. Chair recognizes the chair of the advisory committee, Lynda Peterson.
Mr. Moderator, move that the sum of $378,300 be appropriated to fund capital projects and equipment in accordance with the capital budget schedule appearing on Article IV of the warrant, and that to meet this appropriation, $20,000 will be transferred from water retained earnings, and $358,300 shall be transferred from free cash.
Is there a second? Chair has seconded. Any discussion, questions on the motion by Lynda Peterson? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, which requires a simple majority, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. Chair recognizes Sandy Beaton from advisory.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $314,854.33 for the purpose of balancing the budget and reducing the tax rate for the fiscal year
Is, the motion's been made and seconded. Was there a second? Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it. Just a note, the clerk reminds me that we are not, for those who are listening in the cafeteria, we are not ignoring your vote. Most of these items are passing by fairly large margins by a show of hands, and if there is a question of where to sit in the courtroom, the chair will be alerted by the deputy moderator. So rest assured that the votes in the cafeteria, and there are a fair number of people there, are being counted and viewed as well. Before the chair recognizes the main petitioner to make the main motion of this article, chair just wants to say that the chair is very aware that this article before us is extremely complicated, or controversial, and has generated more heated debate than perhaps anything in recent memory. And that is not necessarily a bad thing. Healthy civilized debate is the hallmark of a democracy, and the chair has often said that town meeting is democracy at its purest form. And as you know, town meetings are unique to this part of the country. However, town meeting is not a free-for-all, open debate forum, and debate, according to the rules that govern this meeting, cannot be as far-reaching as the debate on this matter, or any other matter, that we see on social media platforms, or even around the water cooler. Pembroke town meetings have always been marked with civility and respect, and the chair fully expects that tradition to continue this evening. The rules that govern this meeting expressly prohibit any person, and this is a direct quote from our rules, "to indulge in personalities," end quote. And the chair will be quick to enforce that rule if necessary, particularly if the comments take the form of an ad hominem attack directed at an individual rather than at their position. Our rules are not an attempt to limit free speech. Free speech, of course, is not absolute, but merely to ensure that the debate is fair and to keep the debate focused on the main question. Chair recognizes the main petitioner for this article, Don Bryant.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to oppose the creation of a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee approved by the Select Board.
Is there a second? Chair has seconded. Chair recognizes Don Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I want to start out simply by saying I'm thankful for the opportunity to participate in a town meeting where residents can talk to each other and have direct conversations rather than do our talking through committees, elected officials, or government agencies, as important as they are. To have that conversation, I submitted the petition that's before you as non-binding. The will of the people is our first and best hope for a peaceful order that make a flourishing town possible, and whatever anyone has to say this evening matters, and we want to hear them. Before us is the issue itself. Will Pembroke create through the action of a select board a DEI committee? Many respond, of course, who would ever be against DEI? It's a no-brainer. I have read many of these comments time and again on social media, and not in a snarky way, but in appropriate ways. I appreciate those. Others add along the way, as we've seen, only a racist could oppose a DEI committee. But there are two things that remain unresolved. One, what do these words mean? We time and again ask the select board to define them. They not only refuse to do so, they pointedly insisted that the words, as well as the mission of a DEI committee, be left vague and undetermined. I have never seen in my professional life a defense made of a vague mission statement. And the last thing I would ever want is a government committee set loose to do its work with no definition, no direct accountability to the citizens, and with a direct line to decision-makers, as is the case here. Why are the words left undefined? Not because a fair attempt cannot be made to define them, but because the agenda being pressed by a majority of our select board clearly does not reflect, in my opinion, our historic centrist town, and I think the select board knows it. I am convinced that the words DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion, are a Trojan horse and carriers of illiberal meanings, carriers of concepts and authority that are at odds with freedom of expression, freedom of religion, freedom of association, as well as freedom from unnecessary intrusion of government at ever-increasing levels of our private lives and interests. We certainly have seen how the word equity particularly is regularly used to justify patently unfair policies that have absolutely nothing to do with equality. Persuasion has been replaced with public shaming, moral complexity replaced with moral certainty, facts replaced with feelings, ideas replaced with identity, forgiveness replaced with punishment, debate replaced with deplatforming. Diversity is replaced with homogeneity of thought, and inclusion with exclusion. That's number one. I only have two points. Number two, given that we even have a common understanding of those words, and at this point, we do not, is a government committee the best way to achieve these ends? Over one-third of the committee that will be appointed will be full-time government employees, and that's no statement of disregard for their input, and one high school student. Is this the best way to achieve these ends? I say no. This need not have been a government committee. Any interested group of our Pembroke friends could convene a DEI association or committee and gather around them those who share a mutual concern. Why has the government tract been selected? The answer to that, knowing what's transpired, unsettles me. The actual need for a DEI committee, which has been said time and time again in select board meetings, has not been sufficiently demonstrated in terms of empirical, factual experience. If you know Pembroke and have a historical perspective on this town, you already know this is true. "We could always do better" is a trope that some will say without really any meaning. Yet the select board majority insists that they already know that at least we are sufficiently racist, that we ignore the marginalized, and government must act. The attempt by some who favor the DEI to out in the media a longtime town leader and trusted voice of reason as guilty of anti-Semitic tropes, and then asserting that Pembroke is a town where, in quotes, "people who are non-white are not invited," end of quote, is just the beginning of things to come. Count on it. If you disagree with the agenda, my belief is your name is going to show up on media platforms. This is one of the reasons why a motion to vote by secret ballot will be made tonight. There is no doubt that some mean to out you, to dox you, and make you pay a price for resisting a DEI committee. After all the laws passed by federal and state legislatures, after all the established agencies by presidents, governors, and legislatures, such as the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, the Commission on Disabilities, and we could go on, after all the work of the courts, to say that after all this, we need another governmental institution established is to me incredible. People whose rights are transgressed have sufficient redress, and a whole host of people and agencies to respond. Final paragraph. A committee that will make us better people, who love and value each other, on the face of it, is a time-tested way of failing. I cannot remember the last time I went to a government committee to get my schooling on the golden rule, and which values I should choose and how I should act. For this, I rely upon the mediating institutions, as we always have traditionally and historically, a family, church, synagogue, or mosque, friends, volunteer associations, and neighborhood. Remember. Remember, freedom, our freedom, your freedom, means the right of other people to do things and say things of which you do not approve. The DEI committee will restrict that right. Count on it. Vote yes to oppose the Select Board's creation of a DEI committee. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Select Board, Jessica Bradley-Rushing.
Good evening, folks. My name is Jessica Bradley-Rushing, and I'm the Chair of the Select Board. I want to start tonight by saying that this past summer, when we introduced the idea of creating a committee at the town level to look at diversity, equity, and inclusion, never could I have imagined the levels of resistance, opposition, and vitriol that we would encounter in this effort. To be frank, I've been both surprised and disappointed, because I do strongly feel that even if you already believe that Pembroke is a welcoming community, there is indeed always more that can be done to improve and increase that sense of welcome. Pembroke does not exist in a bubble. We are part of a regional, state, national, and even global community. What happens in the world affects what happens here in this town, and what happens here in this town has an impact on the larger world. The concept of a DEI committee is not unique to Pembroke. In fact, this is a best practice within most organizations, institutions, corporations, and governments. And in fact, I would like to underline that the mission statement has been clearly stated, and that in our discussions, we talked about the fact that were the committee to be seated, then we want to review it. However, over the last weeks and months since we created this committee, many people have come to our meetings to express concern over government overreach. This committee, as has been said many times, will serve only in an advisory capacity. It will not have the authority to tell people what to do, what to think, or how to feel. This committee cannot and will not ever be able to force people to do anything. It will simply serve as a place within the town to have a conversation about how we can best ensure that Pembroke is being thoughtful about whose voices are included in our decision-making. This committee will be a place to work toward making this town more inclusive, more diverse, and more equitable. Many of you have heard the examples that have been provided at the Select Board meetings, but I want to reiterate again that a DEI committee is not in any way, shape, or form centered on only one issue. The committee could do things like ensure that all town events are accessible to members of the disability community, are our facilities ADA accessible, should we have closed captioning, or even an ASL interpreter available for events and meetings. It could make sure that our town is welcoming and open to the LGBTQ+ community by hosting pride events and using inclusive language. It could take into consideration things like non-Christian holidays when scheduling meetings and events, to ensure that members of the Jewish, Muslim, or any other religious background can be included in any and every event. Because while I do believe this is a welcoming town, I would not have moved my family back here three years ago if I didn't think this was a good place to live, I do know that my experiences here don't always match the experiences of my friends who live here, who are members of marginalized communities. Even if you personally have never experienced racism in Pembroke, or anti-LGBTQ+ sentiment, or disability discrimination, or ageism, or sexism, or any other ism in Pembroke, that does not mean it isn't happening. It means we have to ask our neighbors, who are part of those communities, and then listen to them when they tell us what their experiences are. As I'm sure many of you know, Pembroke has long been a town willing to lead. In fact, 250 years ago, Pembroke was the first town to put into writing the idea that the colonies should be independent from Britain. This is a town that has progress and forward-thinking in its foundations. This vote tonight cannot and should not be looked at as comparable to the Pembroke resolves. This should not be a historical event tonight, because in fact, the creation of this committee should be the baseline for what we can and should do to make sure that Pembroke is a place that welcomes and celebrates all people from every background and status. This should be the floor, not the ceiling. But make no mistake, this vote is absolutely a statement of our values. If we vote against promoting the ideas of diversity, equity, and inclusion here tonight, we are saying publicly and loudly who we are and what we believe. I fully embrace the idea that different people come to this from different places of understanding and different levels of comfort, and that is okay. That is the point of a committee like this, to have those conversations. But I am asking Pembroke tonight to make clear that we are a town that welcomes everyone, that we are a town that embraces differences and even celebrates them, and that we are a town that believes in the fundamental values of diversity, equity, and inclusion. I ask you to please vote no on this citizen's petition, and let us get to work to make this town the best version of itself that it can be. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Chair recognizes, I'm going to ask, the chair will ask for your name.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Brooke Museal, and I live at 170 Elm Street. It would be very easy for me to stand up here as a white woman and say that I've never seen racism in Pembroke, or as a straight woman and say I've never seen LGBTQ people discriminated against or harassed in Pembroke. I know both of these things do happen in Pembroke, though, not because I have experienced them, but because I have listened to fellow community members who have experienced them and who have shared their stories. I ask everyone here tonight to practice two things as members of our community share their experiences of living in Pembroke: listening and empathy. Listen to their stories not to judge, respond, or critique, but to understand. Practice empathy, and imagine what it would be like and how it would feel to experience what they have. It takes a great deal of courage for members of our community who have experienced discrimination or harassment to share their stories, because they are taking a risk in doing so. I'm familiar with this risk, because I have a disability. When I have talked about my disability and how it impacts my life, I have often been met with responses of skepticism or disbelief. I have repeatedly heard comments such as, "You seem fine to me. Are you sure you're not just exaggerating?" and "Maybe you're just being lazy. I bet if you worked harder, your disability wouldn't impact you as much." These types of responses are painful, but they are absolutely devastating when they come from the people who are supposed to be there to advocate for and support you. Personally, these responses made me feel invisible and powerless. It felt like I was standing in a room like this, surrounded by people, and screaming at the top of my lungs, but nobody heard me. As hard as I tried to get the attention of all the people around me, they just stared right through me. To have your lived experiences minimized, ignored, and mocked, to not be able to access the resources you need to survive, let alone thrive, is immensely painful and traumatic. I don't know what it is like to live in Pembroke as a person of color, an LGBTQ person, a Muslim or Jewish person, or a person with a physical disability, but I do know what it's like to hold a marginalized identity and be mistreated because of it. I do not want any member of our community who holds a marginalized identity to experience the pain and trauma I have, even if their identities are different from my own. So when one of my fellow community members shares that they have been mistreated because they hold a marginalized identity, I try my hardest to understand them and respond with empathy. This is what the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee comes down to for me: having empathy for every member of our community. It shouldn't have to happen to you for it to matter to you, because as members of the Pembroke community, we stand beside each other in our struggles and support one another. Every single member of our community deserves to have their humanity and dignity honored at all times, and every single member of our community deserves to feel heard, seen, valued, and that they belong in Pembroke. We can all start helping our fellow community members feel heard and seen tonight by listening to their experiences with empathy and supporting the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. Thank you.
Chair recognizes former Selectman Bob DiMarzo.
Mr. Moderator, I would move that just when all the debate is done, that Article Nine be voted on by written secret ballot.
Motion's been made and seconded. We can vote on that motion right now. It's a simple majority vote. As the Chair indicated earlier, we are prepared. You already have the ballots, if you choose, but it is the meeting's choice. Simple majority. The question is whether this requires a forfeit. This is a simple majority vote. State your point of order. Yes. So the motion has been made and seconded. The Chair just wants to explain how it will work. We have boxes. You have the ballots already. We'll pass the boxes along when the time for the vote comes, if you so choose, and that's how the vote will be taken. The ballots will be counted afterwards. So is there any debate on the motion of Bob DiMarzo, which has been seconded, to take a secret ballot? State your name.
I am David Skolnick. I live at 8 Captain Torrey Lane. Is this a sign of moral cowardice that you can't have the bravery of your conviction to vote publicly? Do you care so much about the response on social media that you would care that somebody would see what you vote with your heart, and they would react to it? Maybe you would understand them better, and you would understand yourself better, if you were willing to be public with the way you express yourself? Thank you.
Chair recognizes Dan Tribuco from the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator. Through you to the previous speaker. No, this is not an act of cowardice. It's an act of self-preservation, because because this committee hasn't even been seated yet, and every single person here that is opposed it, maybe not even opposes it, just don't support it, have already been called racist. Already. The Democratic Town Committee, when their meeting-minute distribution said, "Get the town meeting to stop these racists." That's a quote. That's a quote.
The Chair would just caution that we keep this debate on the motion for a secret ballot. Chair recognizes Dan Tribuco.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, through you to the previous speaker. I just needed him and the rest of the members to know that just recently, someone who opposed the DEI committee, a retired Stop &amp; Shop worker, was demoralized and attacked on Facebook by a social media, by a media company, an official certified media outlet. They're already going after retired people for just opposing it. So yes, secret ballot is helpful for a lot of people in here. Not everyone's like me. I put my name out there, and I'm not afraid to take the slings and arrows. Other people are.
Actually, the Chair recognizes
Kathleen Mackler.
On the question of secret ballot, correct?
Yes. I would just like to say that in response to Dan Tribuco's comment, that also in people who have been on, who have come out in support of the DEI committee, have been also attacked because of their beliefs. And I have said that because I supported the beliefs, and people have told me to leave town because of it. So I just want to say that it is coming from both sides, and that needs to be understood. Thank you.
Chair recognizes
Mr. Moderator, I move the question.
Well, is the, is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded. The motion to move the question is not debatable. So we'll first do, and for those who are new, the motion to move the question means that cuts off debate only on the motion to go to a secret ballot, not the main motion. So all those who are in favor of immediately taking a vote, thank you, Chair, is, this requires a two-thirds to move a question? To move a question? Chair is informed that it does take a two-thirds vote to move the question. So we will do it by, again, it's non-debatable. So we'll do it by a show of hands. All those in favor who want to go directly to the vote on the motion to go to a secret ballot, please raise your hand. All those opposed to the motion, please raise your hand. The ayes have it. I declare it reaching the two-thirds necessary for passage. So the main question now, the question before us, is the question on going to a secret ballot. So we'll do it by a show of hands first. All those who wish, and again, if you're standing here, that's fine, but if you're standing in the back, even though with a show of hands, the Chair is not going to count those votes. So all those in favor of the motion to have a secret ballot, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. Ooh, it's too close. So we'll have to do a standing vote. And the ushers know their duties. They know their areas. So I would ask the speakers to go back to their seats. We'll come back in the same order and recognize you, but all those in favor of a secret ballot, please stand and remain standing until counted by the tellers. I can't stop the vote in the middle of a vote, so if there's a point of order or a question, we'll do it afterwards. The Chair will just state. Okay. The Chair, well, again, those standing are in favor of a secret ballot. That is the only motion that is before us right now, and that is what we're voting on. And the folks in the cafeterium will be counted as well. So all those in favor, please stand and remain standing. So the way this works is that each teller will take the microphone, say their name, and the yes vote.
Karen Wright, 38.
Sue Renee, 72.
Angela Sostito, 9.
Angela, you have the cafeterium.
Janet Feige, 45.
Kim Smith, 30.
You can please be seated. All those opposed to the motion for a secret ballot, please stand
Angela Sostito, 35.
Karen Wright, 16.
Kim Smith, 30.
Sue Renee, 18.
On this matter, those voting in the affirmative for a secret ballot are 194, those opposed 153. The motion passes, and when the vote is taken, it will be taken by a secret ballot. Those who were... so we're back to the main motion, Don Bryant's main motion. The chair recognizes Sue Renee.
Hi, Mr. Moderator. Sue Renee, Pleasant Street. I am grateful for this opportunity to address the town meeting tonight. I have lived here for 51 years. My parents still live here, and my husband and I raised our sons here. Thank you to the four select board members for creating the DEI Committee. Thank you to the chair for allowing citizens to express their opinions and keeping the select board meeting civil, as contentious as they were. It is absolutely amazing to me that there has been any pushback on this committee and that we find ourselves here tonight with this article. How did we get here? It is a testament to the fact that we need the DEI Committee in our town. 25 years ago, my workplace was doing diversity training. We're a little behind. We need it in local government. There is no hidden political agenda to a DEI Committee. It's an advisory committee, just like other town committees: recycling, affordable housing, open space. The committee has no financial or legal authority. The DEI Committee will amplify voices and address the needs of people traditionally underrepresented or excluded in government. Recognizing our differences and celebrating our diversity is a community-building effort. Here are some recent activities from local DEI Committees. In Sharon, they reach out to other community minority groups and build a network of resources. In Hingham, they recently just held a Hispanic Heritage Month and a festival. Situette held an event with an educational workshop and a speaker to talk about the history of hate symbols. Situette also has the police on the board, just like Pembroke would, and the police have agreed to take implicit bias training. Plymouth held a Pride Festival this summer. And Plymouth also works with the police department and the minority communities to build trust so that hate crimes can be reported. White nationalist groups are leaving recruiting materials around Pembroke, and this is unacceptable.[881.00][881.00](LAUGHTER). A DEI Committee will help Pembroke grow in a positive way. It sends a message to people that want to do business here and move here that Pembroke is welcoming and an accepting community. Eleven wonderful qualified people have applied for the six open seats. Let's do the right thing, support the DEI Committee, vote no on Article 9, and get these six people seated so they can get to work.[913.61][913.61](APPLAUSE).
Chair recognizes the gentleman to my right, if you could state your name.
Steven Ciciotti, 36, Parker Road. I'm new to this committee, and we moved our family here in mid-2019. I was perfectly happy staying out of any town politics, but I had to attend the meeting on August 4th to also raise my concerns. Immediately after and in the days following that meeting, I talked to more people, both on and offline, and literally not a single one I've spoken to about this disagrees with the explicit concepts of diversity, equity, and inclusion. So that's very clearly not the issue at heart here, and those who claim it is are being either remarkably obtuse or remarkably dishonest.[969.32][969.32](APPLAUSE). We're not against diversity, equity, and inclusion. We're against a committee on diversity, equity, and inclusion.[984.04][984.04](APPLAUSE). Saying it's about diversity, equity, and inclusion is easy. Who could be against that? But calling something a thing does not simply make it so, any more than calling and supporting something like the Patriot Act under Bush's regime, for example, makes you patriotic.[1008.93][1008.93](APPLAUSE). It all really begs the question, and arguably it is just the opposite. The issue is more implicit in that these concepts are muddy and ill-defined. They mean different things in both quality and degree to different people, especially depending on political affiliations. That means clearly and objectively defining and limiting such a committee's role appropriately is very difficult, and it's too easy to end up on a slippery slope. This isn't like qualifying and quantifying the spending on recycling, roads, police, fire, and determining property lines like some comparisons drawn by those pushing for a DEI Committee both on and off the board. Vaguely-defined concepts and aims for committees such as this attract personal and professional activists to fill them, ultimately using it as a vehicle to advance more ideological considerations, which then grow in scope and become wielded as cudgels for set activism. Highly limited and valuable town funds and focus are then, over time, increasingly diverted to ideological programs and further insert themselves into our schools and interactions based on arbitrary and often inconsistent interpretations on how to handle various situations, additionally undermining the roles of parents and families.[1101.65][1101.65](APPLAUSE). Finally, well, not finally, but additionally, I found it extremely ironic that for all the talk of a DEI Committee bringing unity and inclusion to the town, much of the language and behavior I heard and continue to hear and see on display by those pushing for it are anything but.[1130.01][1130.01](APPLAUSE). While it can be difficult for some to find the perfectly politically correct words in a language game that's seemingly always changing, those who grew up in and believe in this town used language and sentiment appealing to community and unity regardless of race, sex, orientation, and creed, whereas those pushing for the DEI more often use language and insinuations to further divide people, shallowly implying one is either privileged or unprivileged, oppressed or oppressor, and looking at everyone more as one-dimensional, intersectional identity tribes rather than as the far more complex and interesting individuals Those not in lockstep with those pushing for the DEI Committee were further described as, literally quote, "having a knowledge deficit that the self-deemed righteous need to fill with their light and their truth." This all while apparently lamenting the literal and figurative, skin-deep assessment against those who attended. Not long after these select board meetings, we already had ideologues, whether applicants to the DEI Committee or on the select board itself, making comments on their platforms on social media and to various news outlets, trying to drum up a media circus, making dishonest, absurd comments about the people of Pembroke, the implication being that there is some racist conspiracy in town. The committee isn't even created yet, and unfortunately, we're already getting a sign of things to come. I opposed the creation of this committee, and I still do. I signed the petition against it then. I would sign it again now, and I'd sign it yet again even if I were on the committee. But it does not follow that because someone opposes the committee, they shouldn't serve on it. If the concern is that of abuse by either activists or an activist select board, or the inherently highly political nature of such a committee, then one who opposes it can still be on it to ensure it stays balanced, stays within the innocuously stated, purely advisory role, and is not abused and turned into a vehicle to advance activism in our schools and town. Similarly, I don't oppose Christianity, but if there was a Christian committee created by the select board made up of a Christian majority, I would be very skeptical and oppose it all the same and for all the same reasons. Further, imagine being told as a town that only Christians can serve on this board to evaluate Christian matters and to serve purely in an advisory capacity to this majority-Christian select board, and applicants being asked if they believe in Christ as a litmus test for serving on it. Wouldn't you oppose this committee? And if it were created anyway, wouldn't you want to see some semblance of balance, a check to ensure it doesn't grow beyond its stated purpose?[1333.78][1333.78](APPLAUSE). Regardless of your leanings on any of these matters, I sure would hope so. I said it at the select board meeting, and I'll say it again: With the creation of this committee, those on the board who irresponsibly move ahead with this inherently divisive, hot-button, political vehicle of an issue expose themselves not as representatives for the community of those that actually live here, but as activists representing something different entirely.
Chair recognizes Becky Coletta from the Select Board.
So there's been a lot said about me on social media. I'm going to start by saying that I've been accused of being divisive. I can tell you that since I first talked about this committee a year ago, I've been said that I've been a racist against white people. I've been said that I am divisive. I've been said that I should be reported to turtle boy. My neighbor sent out hateful letters using my return address and then came to me on the date of our town election and screamed at 10:30 at night, a blood-curdling scream that got me out of bed. I will be posting the video on social media tomorrow. Tonight, what I want you to ask is, are you really opposed to diversity, equity, and inclusion?
The chair would ask that no matter who is speaking, that you be respectful to the speaker and not make comments derogatory or otherwise while any speaker on any side is speaking. Chair recognizes... Chair recognizes Becky Coletta.
So I have taken a lot of inappropriate behavior, violations of open meeting laws and what have you, over the last year. And I have done that for the good of the town and to try to not make this more divisive. We actually waited until after the election so that people would see that a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee was not meant to be political. It was meant to bring good programming, good efforts, and good deeds to our town. I first thought of... you know, Tracy and I brought this up, and one of the issues was I had been to the Plymouth No Place For Hate Committee. That committee has been in existence for probably about 20 years. They have Martin Luther King Day events. Have we ever had one here in town? They have pride events. They have events around the Holocaust. They do programming with the Women Voters League. I can't think of the name of it. League of Women Voters, thank you. And they do these things because there's a role for leadership on helping us to see... the other day on social media, there was someone who was a mom, and people are saying, "Oh, there's no racism." None at all. Wanting to be better is one thing, but saying there's none at all? I mean, come on, people. There was a mother who was the mother of biracial children who said that her children have experienced this. There were 150 comments on that post, and everyone acted as if she was talking in the forest with no one around her. One person commented and acknowledged what she said. This is about giving people acknowledgement of their experiences and helping to move our town forward. It was never meant to be divisive. It was never meant to be political. It was meant to be something good for our town, and I hope that the people tonight will encourage us to move forward with it.[1587.87][1587.87](APPLAUSE).
Chair recognizes former member of the Pembroke School Committee, Patrick Chilcot.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Patrick Chilcot, 66, Foreman's Drive. This is probably going to shock a lot of people in this building, but I agree with everything that Jessica said at the beginning of this debate. I do believe that we all should be coming together. We all should be having these conversations. I also believe we should feel free from retribution, free from vindictive behavior. So I'm going to tell you a story, and it's a real one. Fifteen months ago, the chairman of my Board of Directors, and the CEO of my company, the president of the Massachusetts Senate, the speaker of the Massachusetts House, Representative Cutler, Senator Warren, and several leaders of trade associations in the business that I am in, received a letter about me. That letter accused me of supporting President Trump. It accused me of being right to life. It accused me of refusing to kneel for the flag because I had a screw Nike inside of the U.S. 13-star flag. And they were asked, "How can you employ someone like that?" They went after my job, and they are people in this room tonight because that letter came from Pembroke. They went back to my Facebook to 2011 and took snippets because they wanted to paint me in a specific way, and it was my actions for 53 years at the time that proved otherwise. They are lying to you. Dan Tribuco got up in a selectman's meeting, probably regretted the words he said, regretted the comment that he made. But then this was weaponized against him in a closed meeting... in a closed Facebook group. They encourage people to go to the press. They encourage people to go to national organizations and go after that man and that man's employer talk to him. Now here's the deal. If they can do this when they have to look at this person every other week through their entire term of office, make no mistake, they will do it to you. So who are these people who are doing this? Today is one of those days where I feel like I may flip a table and or rip the beating heart, figuratively of course, from the next person who angers me. I have catapulted from my life more friends and family in the last five years than I knew was possible. Literally F off forever. I have no willingness to be friends with people who are okay with bigotry, stupidity, and fascism. Small-town white people are not okay, and it makes them dangerous to our government and any sort of civility, and one of our selectmen's comments can confirm. These here are complaints against these selectmen over the last month and a half, two months. Eight complaints, and there is an attorney general investigation into their violation of the... of the open meeting law, because they blatantly violated the open meeting law. You have people that are before you telling you that this is about welcoming, this is about acceptance, this is about wanting to educate people. I agree. I will be happy to sponsor a whole series of discussions and speakers and everything else, because it's important. Learning other cultures is important, learning other struggles is important, learning what it's like with people with developmental disabilities in this country is important. It's equally important that we protect the right of discussion, and that we protect that sacred knowledge from people that are going to go after you. I beg you to vote yes. I beg you to send a message, and I beg you to stop the hate that I have seen over the last 15 months. Vote yes.
Chair recognizes... I have to remind me your name, I'm sorry.
My name is Norm Pichet.
Norm Pichet.
And I live at 238 Edgewood Drive in Pembroke. People here are talking about experiences, well, I'm gonna give you all experience with DEI. I'm reading something from my daughter, who is a town landowner, but lives in another community. "I was raised in Pembroke when my parents built our home 40 years ago. Today, I am a property owner. I spent many years training and employed at the world's top psychiatric institution as a forensic psychiatric social worker, and have served some of the most vulnerable citizens in the US and from abroad. I am no stranger to diversity, culture, and stigma, yet I strongly oppose the use of the terms diversity, equity, and inclusion to describe the intent behind these committees. My career saw me leave Pembroke in search of a town with strong educational system. I purchased a home in Canton. A couple of years ago, the town established a DEI committee for the purpose of advising, under the mission statement similar to the one that's presented by the Pembroke Select Board. Before long, the committee began advising the schools. Quickly, all weekly newsletters from the principal and the teacher professional trainings were of race, gender-obsessed topics, and leftist politics were rapidly wound into the curriculum. Our nightmare began in my daughter's, my granddaughter's eighth-grade class, when the young teacher opted to introduce her belief that BLM, the organization, was the subject of hate crimes. My daughter, a child who maintains friends of many races and enjoys racial diversity within our own family, so that won't be used against me, raised her hand and politely shared her view that she saw BLM as a group that was perpetuating violent riots in cities. Rather than encouraging her ability to think critically and bravely disagree, she was overtly shamed by the teacher. She was then followed onto the bus by two students and video recorded while they verbally abused and intimidated her for her factual statement in class, calling her a racist, a homophobe, and disgusting. The videos were then disseminated on social media. She was exposed to verbal abuse in hallways and classrooms for months. She was drawn, she was challenged to a fistfight, she lost all but one brave friend. The last straw was drawn when some boys shared a nude video on social media claiming it was her. It was not. With police involvement, we chose to pull her from school and finish the year via remote learning. Her emotional torment was heartbreaking. My husband and I had multiple meetings with the school administration, and let me share with you what the DEI agenda flooding our school systems looked like. My daughter was given a safe person. This staff member was an ardent BLM DEI supporter on social media. When I complained, she was given another safe person. This staff member had a picture of George Floyd on his door at the school. While the majority of perpetrators were students of color, the only one to receive punishment was a white girl. We were told these actions did not violate bullying or harassment policies because my granddaughter was not part of a protected class. When we questioned how such behavior could be considered anything but harassment, the vice principal stated in a multi-person meeting that, unfortunately, white girls and boys don't have the same rights. Our daughter, a kind, straight, A student athlete, was unable to attend her eighth-grade promotion as a result, only to learn later that the two initial bullies were chosen by the administration as speakers at the promotion. Just last week, over five months later, we received the hard-fought results of the Title IX investigation by the state. We requested to examine the multitude of abuses against our daughter in relation to the law. Our fight with the school system was not in vain. The investigator and the superintendent acknowledged that, under the law, our daughter had been bullied, and that it was severe enough to impact her ability to receive her education and the school's ability to operate as usual. While our story is just one, and that expose was released on the Canton Public Schools based upon our story, parents began reaching out from Canton as well as neighboring towns to express similar experiences. The DEI agenda is a pervasive, toxic ideology that ultimately pits children against children. Instead of focusing on academics or how to be generally good people, kids are now taught to evaluate each other based upon narrow-minded identity checkboxes, similar to the boxes checked during the Select Board's DEI committee meetings. The words diversity, equity, and inclusion sound warm, designed as such to be irrefutable by any decent person. But our family promises you, the results are anything but, and the words are a facade. Everything I have shared with you here tonight can be verified with videos, documents, and audio recordings. My daughter contemplating, not speaking tonight because I have to do the speaking, I have watched the smear campaign against the citizens of this town led by members of its own select board. I considered my career and the fact that they may come after me. At the end of the day, I will always choose to stand by my family, my country, and my values, and use my voice to ensure that no other parent, white, black, gay, or straight, has to watch their child suffer because there was a group intent on dividing us. Pembroke must resist this suburban identity politics and stay true to itself, a small town of good, hard-working people who are plenty capable of demonstrating solid character and neighborly love to members of any group without the government further imposing this toxicity in our lives and schools. Thank you.
The Chair would just, again, caution, there's a lot wrapped up in this discussion, and the Chair is well aware of that. However, there's a lot of people that have lined up to speak, and the Chair would just ask that any speaker address an issue that has not already been addressed, keep the focus on the question, which is whether the committee should be formed or should not be formed, and to try to stick to that subject matter. Chair recognizes the gentleman to my left, if you could state your name.
Hi, I'm, oh, a little too close, sorry. Hi, I'm Nicholas Adams, 4 Putting Brook Drive. Now, for anyone boozed, I'm 21, probably younger than a lot of your kids and grandkids, so keep that in mind. But, so, I'm gonna start out just by saying that what I wanna talk about is more like why I think that it won't be abused, why I don't think that there's a great legal route for it to supersede its powers, and Town Council, if I say anything wrong, or anyone else, feel free to correct me. So, first of all, we've talked a lot about freedom of speech, press, association, religion, these are fundamental values of American society guaranteed in our First Amendment. Now, the Fourteenth Amendment incorporates the First Amendment to the states, if I'm proper on my high school civics. The Tenth Amendment further authorizes and constitutionally protects our state's police powers, which is really where they're exercised under constitutionally. State law authorizes our town's autonomy, form of government, ability to form committees like this, advisory committees, even committees with a little more power than just an advisory committee. And it also has its own protection in our state constitution and state statutes against the kinds of discrimination and the freedoms that, or to protect the freedoms, I'm sorry, that are guaranteed in our First Amendment and further freedoms beyond what is even guaranteed in our federal constitution. So, in sum, I just don't really see a route for at least to impose legal authority. I mean, I guess anything's possible in the marketplace of ideas of private citizens going out and doing different things, but that's not really, that's kind of beyond the scope of the committee, in my opinion. But I think that we have plenty of protection from this committee exceeding its powers under our federal state constitutions, and federal and state law, and that if you do not want the committee, I think that we can go on, make this an election issue, and we're voting for our town's select board again, or if you think that they are superseding their, or exceeding, sorry, their legal authority, you can sue to enjoin them, based on what we've authorized them to do, or based on if they're going against any of our freedoms aforementioned that are protected by federal constitution statute, all that stuff. So, hopefully, I didn't say anything wrong, and I didn't say anything too objectionable, and I hope you all have a great night.
State your point of order. So, so, the longstanding practice of this Chair has been not to recognize a motion to move the question from the floor. If you want to move the question, it's a perfectly legitimate motion, that's in order, we just voted on it some time ago, but you have to stand at the microphone and be recognized in the order in which the Chair recognizes speakers to have that, to make that motion. Chair recognizes the speaker to the right, if you could state your name.
I'm Julie Vosberth, and I live at 20 Edward Drive. I'm speaking from the position of a white person, yet I have a unique position in that my child is not. So, when I moved here with my husband Paul from Maryland in 2005, I couldn't even really conceptualize, because of the diversity in the Maryland and tri-state area, that a town could actually have a lot of racism still attached to it. And over the past four to five years after our son graduated, he's from Guatemala, he's Ladino, he looks not just Hispanic, but in addition, very Mayan Indian, with very Mayan features. And upon, upon living here, after about three weeks, the commentary began. And what's interesting to me is that I probably ended up hearing a lot of comments that a lot of parents of racially diverse children didn't end appearing because people thought that they were talking to the parent of white children. We do have three biological white children, but our son being Guatemalan was not a well-known fact to a lot of people. So I heard a lot of racist comments over the years, personally, because people thought that they were kind of sharing their opinion, you know, kind of on the side as a casual statement. Moving forward, our son didn't share with us a lot of the experiences that he had. I think he was actually embarrassed, because I think he felt like he stood out, in addition to the other ways that he stood out from his siblings. Our daughters, one of our daughters was in the same grade as him and shared some of the experiences that he had. Comments like, "Wow, you look more like a monkey than a person." He was called a chimpanzee starting in third grade when we moved here. He was kicked, he was pushed off a swing, there were a variety of things, and I'm not gonna go on and on because it's a long evening to start with. But I do feel that we really need to embrace the concept that other towns are doing this, some more successfully than others. Organizations, places of employment, businesses, we need to continue to be viewed as a progressive town, not just for the citizens within the town, but the citizens from neighboring towns. We wanna be a town that is open to all. I'm not saying that the committee, if formed, would be beyond reproach, would go swimmingly, would not have bumps in the road, but I think that any committee is going to be as strong as the members that are on it, are going to, is gonna be successful if people are discerning and stick to the purpose stated. Then a mission statement will be the key to the success of an organization like this, and any organization. And the person who spoke earlier and said, "Questioning is actually a very strong thing to do." If we're questioning how this is gonna go, it means that we would go in with our eyes wide open about the limitations of such committee, and make sure that they were implemented so as not to be far-reaching or overreaching beyond the mission of the committee. I think it could be done in a way that could be positive, with different organizations formed as subcommittees of it. I think there could be activities in the town that embrace it. And I think about Kathleen Keegan and her group and the Pembroke celebrates in September. I don't think anyone could possibly have conceptualized what a big event that could become and what a positive. And my feeling is that we can't be afraid of something because of what it might become. We're in the driver's seat of something like this, and we are in a position to therefore guide it and instruct it to become a positive for all marginalized groups within the town. Thank you.
Chair recognizes Lisa Drennan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Lisa Drennan, 3 Sandy Lane. I'm gonna make this real short. By my profession, I'm an inclusion consultant. I work with community organizations seeking to be more disability-inclusive in their practices, with a goal of building a more diverse and inclusive culture. Through my work locally and nationally, I've seen firsthand, over and over again, the tremendous positive impact these efforts have had within their communities, organization-wide, for individuals with and without disabilities, and their families. Now I specialize in the disability dimension of diversity, and I know Pembroke DEI committee can positively impact our community and people who represent all dimensions of diversity in the same positive way. Inclusion works. Thank you.
Chair recognizes the speaker to my right, if you could state your name.
My name is Shawna Townley, and I live on Taylor Street. I don't have anything prepared, but I feel very strongly about this. I'm a licensed mental health counselor. I have a practice here in town. I'm also a trained mediator. I've worked in the court systems. I think it's very sad how divisive this has become in our town. But why I'm really here is because I have a son with autism who was not able to be educated in Pembroke because he was bullied so horribly, and the teachers told me things like, "Well, we can't monitor the playground," when he was in second grade. People were throwing rocks at him, and it got worse from there, and then I found out that the teachers were physically abusing him as well, in this town, and no one could do anything about that. My son was educated elsewhere, and is still being educated elsewhere, because this town is not as inclusive as it could be. I understand many of you feel it is very inclusive, and that would be lovely if it was, but that was not our experience, and I think if you think that it is inclusive, then maybe you need to reach out and hear what other people have to say. And I hope that this committee will go through, and I hope that students like my son, who is neurodiverse, will be more included in this town, because it was really sad to see that.
Chair recognizes the gentleman.
Stephen Fertney, Pleasant Street. Look, I've heard everyone's story tonight. I haven't come prepared with anything, but, you know, I empathize with everyone's story, and I think we can all agree that we all want this town to be more inclusive, more diverse, and we all wanna have more equality. You know, that story that we just heard, that's terrible. I mean, no kid should ever have to go through that. But I personally don't think that this is the correct way to do it. I don't think that the DEI is the way to do it. I see this as weird ideology. I've seen it in college. The diversity isn't actually, they're not really calling for diversity, because they actually wanna exclude a lot of thought. And I do agree with the guy over here, he said, that if, or some guy over there too, he said, "If we do have the committee, that we should have someone who opposes it on the committee." But I oppose the committee. But yeah, I don't think it, I don't think that this committee, the people that are calling for it, really want diversity. Equity is a terrible thing. It's the opposite of equality, because equity refers to equality of outcome, equality refers to equality of opportunity. Both can't coexist. If you wanna learn further about this topic, I urge you to look up Dr. Jordan Peterson. Now, what's the last one? The inclusion... The inclusion, or the diverse, yeah, the inclusion. I don't think that they're trying to include people in this committee. I mean, if, and this really goes deep down into critical race theory, if you really think about it. I mean, the, unfortunately, if you, if you, I bet you, if you polled people who are for this committee, they believe in, in, in critical race theory, and if you polled people against this committee, they would be against critical race theory. I feel like critical race theory is a fundamental aspect of what is dividing this issue. And so, I've, I've looked at it. If you want to learn more about critical race theory, go on the American Bar. It's where, it's, it's where the lawyers go. It's, it's, there's all this information about lawyer documents on the American Bar, and you will find that they do not recognize racism as being against another person's race. They recognize it as being against another person's culture. It's a complete different definition of racism. It's exactly why, you know, if, I don't want to get too political, but Joe Biden says, you ain't black, and you, and people wonder why, why he says that. Well, it's because he's referring to cultural differences. It's the, this whole thing is about culture. It is not about race. So, I just don't, I don't really agree with the fundamental view of this DEI. It's ridiculous. And I want to, I, obviously, I'm not as, I'm not too prepared, but I just want to, I just want to emphasize, I love everybody. I love black people, gay people, straight people, white people, every race, okay? And I hope that everybody can be treated better in this town, but I don't think that this is the way to do it, because this is leftist ideology, and it is going more towards socialism every day.
Chair recognizes the gentleman to my right.
Damian Fratazio, 162 Plain Street. I would submit that the good people of Pembroke do not need a committee or a government agency to tell them what is moral, equitable, or inclusive. And I'm just going to finish with, I would like to submit a motion right now, without further discussion, to put a vote to this.
Okay, so, so, Chair, the meeting will be in a brief recess. The Chair, the meeting will come to order. So, the Chair's policy has always been never to allow someone to speak and then to move the question, because that effectively allows you to say what you want to say, and then shut everybody else off. So, the Chair just consulted with town council, and that's within the moderator's purview, not to accept that motion, and the Chair will not accept that motion, because the speaker made some comments and then moved the question. So again, to be clear, and it's not the gentleman's fault, he didn't realize that, but we have to be consistent in how we apply the rules to every single meeting. So the motion to move the question is always in order. The Chair will recognize the motion in its turn, if someone comes up to speak and make the motion. But, again, if you want to make the mo, move the question, that's the motion, and that's it. You can't address the meeting and then move the question. Chair recognizes the speaker. Point, what, the Chair will state your point of order. So the Chair missed that entire, that, that point of order that's well taken. Two to one in favor, Red Sox, or, okay, that's good, all right. Chair recognizes this woman.
Hi. My name is Melissa Killam. I live at 207 Edgewater Drive. Mr. Moderator, I'm here to demonstrate that this committee is not what's causing the division. Or is it bringing negativity, as many have stated prior to me? That division is coming from some of the propaganda that was handed out prior to this meeting, and photocopies being made and that kind of thing. But you know what? Those who supported the select board, four to one decision to form the DEI committee, are not looking for problems. Mr. Moderator, I do not have to look hard to find sufficiently ident, to sufficiently identify issues in this town about diversity, equity, and inclusion. I see it when my child tells me how their friend did not come out until they left town, because they were scared. My child tells me that she had to defend the new non-binary colleague that she's working with, because of inappropriate comments. Or I can just go to Pembroke Connect, or Pembroke Connect Uncensored, or watch it at the end of a select board meeting. And you know that feeling you get? It's very, very, it's a, it's a real feeling. It's very uncomfortable. That's what it is. It's uncomfortable, but it's not division. I understand that I'm not a minority in any form, and I'm a, I have had times when I've been very uncomfortable, but it's necessary. We need to address these issues if we want to be a better community. And a lot of people keep saying, take feelings out of it. Okay, we'll take feelings out of it. There is research, real research, not Facebook research, that DEI initiatives improve economic growth and greater prosperity for those in the town. Children that go to more inclusive schools have higher earnings as adults, they critically think better, and they're more likely to attend college if they choose to do so. This DEI advisory committee is a necessity. It's voluntary, it's advisory, and it will lift everyone up, everyone. Vote no on Article Nine.
Chair recognizes the gentleman to my right, if you could state your name.
My name is John Conneton, and I'm not comfortable to give my address. So, but I live on Water Street. I'm recognizing that I am extremely naive, because when this was put on the website, I thought, great, diversity, equity, and inclusion, the town's getting into this. I'll volunteer. I submitted my application for this committee. I feel really uncomfortable about all the conversation that's happened around this topic. I have been doing this work for 20 years in corporate America. I have sat across the table from people who look different than me, and listened to their stories, and asked them questions. What's life like for you? And I just listened. I have sat in conference rooms and training rooms, teaching diversity, equity, and inclusion in corporate America, and I have had people say to me that same-sex marriage is going to lead to bestiality, and pedophiles. I'm gay, and that was offensive to me. But I had to sit there and patiently work with people around these thoughts and ideas. My partner and I have had a foster child with us for four years of mixed race, and the things that he came home and told us that happened to him in school were awful. Wasn't every day, it wasn't all the time, but there were things that happened that were painful for me to hear. I also sat with him during the protests around George Floyd, and what happened with him, and to try to explain to a mixed-race child what's going on in the world, who is a teenager and just coming to terms with who he is, was an extremely difficult conversations to have, and difficult experience to go through. I have been called a faggot at Stop &amp; Shop parking lot. This isn't all stuff that happens in schools and kids, this is things that happen with adults. As I came in here tonight, and I do this all the time, I walk into a room and I just scan. I've seen three people of color here tonight, out of 355 people in the room, three people of color. And I haven't heard from any of them, and I don't know if that's out of discomfort for coming up to speak, or what the reason is, and I'm not going, I make no, I make up no stories about that, but three people of color. I don't know how I would feel if I was a person of color, sitting here tonight, listening to this conversation. I know as a gay person, I'm not really comfortable. And a lot of this stuff has only made me think about moving, and not staying here. I recently went up to Montpelier, and within 10 minutes of walking around the town, I knew that that was a town I would want to live in so bad. And it was merely walking around town. I didn't talk to anybody. It was very apparent that that was a town that would embrace me, and I would feel comfortable there. I do not feel very comfortable here. But I will continue to live here, I will continue to pay my taxes, and I will continue to pay for my water and my sewer, and I'm a member of this community, and I should be treated with respect. In my neighborhood, I live beside and across the street from African-American neighbors, and I also live across the street from somebody from the Middle East. I love the fact that it is, at least in that small part of the town, diverse. And I, I hope to have this Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee seated. I hope to be a member of it. I hope to work hard, not to be in a, what was the term used? An activist. I don't have time for that. I've done that. I don't have time. I'm a busy person, I've got a full-time job, I've got a lot of work to do. I want to work with a committee who's going to help to progress things forward, make sure that this is an inclusive town and environment, so that we can all feel comfortable living here. At the very beginning, you talked about the Christmas tree lighting. I would love next year for you to talk about a Hanukkah lighting as well. Any other religion, other than just Christianity, and Christianity alone. There's a lot of work to be done, and I think it could be very meaningful, and in all the work that I've done in corporate America, all I have seen is nothing but value in four companies I have worked for, creating a more inclusive environment, where people feel welcomed, they can take down the guard that they have up, and just be themselves, and be comfortable in the environment, and it creates a more profitable organization. Companies would not go after doing that type of work if it wasn't for value. They would not invest any money in that if there wasn't a value to it. That's all I got to say.
Chair recognizes former selectman Vincent Cogliano.
Old Washington Street. What are you afraid of, Pembroke? What's the big deal? It's only a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee, nothing to worry about, right? We need it, they say, because Pembroke isn't a welcoming town. It isn't. Now, that's funny. You could have fooled me. Our family moved here in 1950. There were 2,500 people living in Pembroke. Now, there were over 18,000. Somebody had to welcome all those people. Now, there was a lot of racism back in the 1950s, and members of the LGBTQ+ community were not out in the open back then. In the mid-1960s, a lot of people from Boston started moving to Pembroke, because they didn't like the forced busing in Boston of their children. That was supposed to integrate education and make it better for everyone, but it didn't. It caused anger and division. So a lot of families moved to Pembroke. Now, things didn't change much here. We didn't see any cross burnings, and no one was dressing up in white sheets, as far as we could tell. They just seemed happy to be out of Boston, away from all of the anger in that city. When the Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. came to Boston, some of us went to the common, so we could see him. We all thought, this was a big deal. We were going to fight discrimination. And there were laws written back in that time, too, a lot of them, like the Civil Rights Act of 1964. And pretty soon, black people could go to college and play sports, and even become President of the United States, and we were proud of the progress that we had made. I didn't support Barack Obama for President, but when he was elected, I was very proud of America. I thought this would be one more step towards that colorblind society that Dr. King talked about. Yes, we still had work to do, but we were making progress. And if we had come this far, we could certainly make it the rest of the way. And partly because of the civil rights movement, we had gays and lesbians coming out and being accepted in the community. It was exciting. We weren't perfect, but you could see the progress everywhere. It was at school, at work, at school, and in politics. Millions of Americans were looking into their hearts and rejecting discrimination of any kind. Or so we thought. Now we're told that all of that progress that we thought we had made was nothing more than an illusion. We are told that Dr. King's dream is a lie, that the American dream is a lie. People can never live together in harmony. We're told that being judged not by the color of your skin, but by the content of your character, is unachievable. We're being told that the color of your skin is the most important thing about you, or your gender. And now, we even have a private Facebook group in Pembroke, where people talk about how unwelcoming we are, and how we're all racist. And some members of our select board are members of that secret Facebook page. And if you disagree with anything on that site, you're kicked off. Hey, but don't worry. Once this committee gets up and running, everything will be fine. All they want is to educate us. Don't be afraid. But these people do scare me. I can see where this is going, and I don't like it. I already see their influence on town websites, that are filled with books written by authors who hate America and hate capitalism. That scares me. Their intolerance of anyone who disagrees with them scares me. Their rejection of Dr. King in a colorblind society scares me. Their denial of all of the progress that we've made as Americans really scares me. This committee scares me. They claim they're the welcome wagon, but this wagon is being pulled by a Trojan horse. Wherever government-backed DEI committees are formed, you can bet that the teaching of critical race theory is not far behind. Critical race theory is a poisonous philosophy that divides people and makes them hate themselves and each other. For the first time, millions of Americans are learning about these committees and about critical race theory, and they're coming to their senses, and they're rejecting them. Dr. King wanted us all to learn to accept each other and to live with each other, and we were trying. That's not what promoters of CRT want. They want division and resentment. What they do always divides people. We see that now, and we disavow their distorted view of America and of Pembroke. Your skin color isn't the most important thing about you, nor your gender. What's important has always been who you are, and what's in your heart. We have moved away from that belief as a direct result of this movement to divide us. This is not a positive direction that we're taking. It's extremely negative. I reject their ideas, and I hope you do, too. We need to get back to Dr. King's dream. We must stop listening to the dividers and find unity and understanding. This government-backed committee is not the answer to a problem. It is the problem. Vote yes on this article.
Chair recognizes the speaker to my right, if you could state your name.
Pam Baroni, Elm Street. I just want to make a motion that we move to a vote.
Motion's been properly made and seconded. It is not subject to debate. It does require a two-thirds. We'll try it first by the show of hands. All those in favor of going directly to the main motion, directly to the vote of moving the question, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have been, I declare it so voted, having reached the necessary two-thirds, ready for passage. So, once again, I'm going to ask everyone who wishes to vote to take a seat. Again, those seated in the visitor's section will not be counted. The tellers will pass out the boxes for each row. Be sure to tear your slip in half. Don't put the whole slip in. Yes or no? I've been reminded to ask that.
Clarify, yes, if you want to go in.
I'm sorry? Yes, yes, okay. So, again, this is, this is important, because there's some confusion about the, the question. Before we take any more ballots, just hang on, just one sec. Again, the, the vote is somewhat counterintuitive, and the Chair will try to boil it down to its simple, simplest denominator. If you oppose the creation of this committee, you will vote yes on the question. If you support the committee, you will vote no on the question. Once again, the Once again, the motion is, made by Don Bryant, move that the town vote to oppose the creation of the committee, approved by the select board. So, once again, if you approve of the committee, you will vote yes. If you, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If you oppose, I'm sorry. If you oppose the committee, you will vote yes. If you support the committee, you will vote no. So, please, we'll begin the voting and passing the boxes, and stick either the yes or the no ballot into the box. Just for the edification of those here, we have two more articles, fairly routine articles. It will take a number of minutes for the votes to be counted. So, while the votes are being counted, we will dispose with the remainder of the two articles, and then, hopefully shortly thereafter, we'll have the results of the vote. As soon as I can locate the town clerk, we will continue. The chair will call the meeting to order, and we will dispense with the final articles. Article 2 is the next item of business. And the chair recognizes Stephen Walsh from Advisory.
Move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $6,648.39 to provide for the unpaid bills from fiscal year 2021 listed below.
That's listed in the warrant. The chair will state that this, since it's an unpaid bill, it requires a nine-tenths vote. So, we'll first do it by a show of hands, and hopefully we can ascertain nine-tenths from the show of hands. All those in favor of the motion by Stephen Walsh, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it unanimous, which is better than nine-tenths, and so voted. And the last item is Article 6. And the chair recognizes Liz Benati, excuse me.
That's because I'm the newest member of the advisory board, so... Mr. Moderator, move that the town vote to authorize the creation of a special purpose stabilization fund in accordance with Section 5B of Chapter 40 of the Massachusetts General Laws, for the purpose of funding special education, and further appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of expenses of the Pembroke Public Schools, and further to transfer from free cash the sum of $150,000.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? This motion requires a two-thirds vote, so we'll try it with a show of hands. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed, please raise your hand. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted, having reached the necessary two-thirds necessary for passage. So, we're still counting, and so the meeting will be in a brief recess until the results are final. The chair will just take this opportunity to thank you for your attendance at this very important meeting, particularly for those who are first timers. We welcome you, and we welcome you back to the annual town meeting, which will be in May of next year. We appreciate your participation. It is democracy in its purest form. And the chair also wants to particularly thank the Assistant Town Manager Sabrina Chilcott for her assistance in the preparation of the warrant and the motions, and particularly the town clerk's office for their work in making sure this meeting went smoothly. So, the chair particularly thanks you for that. Thank you. So, the meeting will be in a brief recess. The meeting will come to order. On this matter, 196 voting in the affirmative, 173 voting in the negative, the motion passes. Lynda Peterson from Advisory moves that the meeting be adjourned. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it, and I declare it so voted. The meeting is adjourned.